Is that working? That's the question.
They look good. Yeah, they do.
But you see where the closed captions aren't shoot. Oh, there they go. All right, good. That was what happened with M one eight. I think it turned on. So all right, good. Ready, but going.
What problems then? Work session is not things to worry. Five, four oh five. And we have a point.
We have standing room only.
We do. I mean, amazing when you guys now see so near each other. And, and so the first thing on the agenda before they work, we announced and I know that you guys have all been working together to try to figure out what your, what your hours are gonna be. And so it looks like you wanna do Mondays eight four, Tuesdays eight four, Wednesdays eight five, and Thursdays eight and four. And that takes into account that on two Mondays a month, you have late for select board. I guess my only question, I mean, my only question would be, I see on here that a lot of other towns have days where they're open at seven or seven thirty. And is that to give members of the public who have to work from eight to five time to get in here? I mean,
It might be, we, I mean, just so you know, I mean, I'm typically here by seven thirty in the morning and I've always, I mean, I unlock the door and I leave it open. Very few people come in here before eight o'clock. I think this community is really more of a, you know, I mean, and, and at eight o'clock, we do get a lot of people that come in. I know we see, you know, like Liz, she's like taking the walk up. We typically receive, you know, right after eight o'clock.
Do we ever have people who are concerned that they wanna come after work and they can't get in because we have flowers?
We haven't heard a lot of that over the years.
We haven't. And by the same, so then Sue and I have, you know, we have, you know, if we're here, you know, late for a select board meeting, or if we're just staying here late because we're working on something, we have made arrangements with people.
In the thirty years that we've been here, it's been very rare that we ever left here at three thirty in the afternoon. Sometimes we're lucky to get out on a Friday at three thirty, but oftentimes not. Um, so, you know, people have had that availability to get in here. And if, if they call ahead and kind of like make an appointment, I mean, we're open to do stuff like that, too. We don't have a problem with it.
And I guess one of the other things that I'll point out is now that there is rapid renewal, where people can do their car registrations and boat registrations online. You know, I'm finding like, I'm sort of looking at the list, because every month, of course, I have to deposit the excise tax into the account. And I'm seeing who it is. Some people are people who work out of town. And to tell you the truth, those people are saying, oh, my God, this is, you know, I can do this in the middle of the night, or I can do this, you know, it's the greatest thing, you know, since sliced bread. But there's also people who are retired who are using that. So I'm.
No, I, listen, I think it's a great idea. And I think, but listen, we, 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 we've got this as the framework. If there's needs to be a nuance here or there, you guys will deal with it.
And that's, that's one of the things too that I've learned, that Karen and I have talked about, but I've also learned from other communities that have taken this approach on the new way of, you know, working four day a week, is that, you know, like some towns did a six month trial period, some did an eight months, some see how it ran for a month or two, and if we need to tweak it, you know, if we need to change it, we don't have any problem. The only thing that, that hurt, that Karen and I both agree upon is that there's, there are communities out there that are going into this approach, and then they have all these weird, like Monday, a weird one, Tuesday, a weird one. And I think our community would really rather see the consistency as well as myself. I don't work well on all these jumping.
And stopping times every day. And I mean, to tell you the truth,
confusing.
Yeah, well, see confusing for me, too. I mean, I thought if I, okay, I gotta be to work by such and such time.
What day is it?
Listen, I think it's a great idea. And I, you know, it, I'm sure it's gonna be fine.
Well, I tell you what, why don't we try it for three months? That worth. And then, um, at the end of three months, we'll see if there's any feedback about could, could we have an earlier day, or would really be nice if you guys feel open to five thirty one night or something like that. And let's see, um, how that goes.
Do we have a formal vote on it, or is it something that?
Well, this is a work session to begin.
No, 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 but I'm saying, I'm just, I'm asking, do we have to, do we have to have a formal vote?
I don't think you have to have a formal vote, but it would be ideal. Obviously, you guys are meeting in a meeting
after.
after this one, for at the regular scheduled meeting, we make an announcement there and we'll, we'll get out all over the place we can. And I'm assuming as part of the recommendation, you talked with Derek. Did you guys?
Yeah.
Do you, are you okay with the?
Gone around and around. I had those wacky hours that they were talking about. And I said, look, as long as you guys are building some time in there for you guys to have your flexibility, your schedule, which this does for them, like, like Karen said, she gets here at seven thirty. So that's where she'll make up a good, like,
We were gonna.
four hours or more right there.
So it gives them a little transition.
So she'll be here sick.
Karen, you're, you're probably gonna be more like seven to get your stuff done.
But I think that's part of the flex is that hours open to the public, but then you guys and Derek work around when you make up the additional hours, because the public hours don't have it.
Right.
Right. As soon as you work here to eight to four for the public, like, I'll use me for an example. We were at camp this weekend, left from China, got here about four to eight. So today I wasn't in at seven thirty, but I might stay later on the other end, or I might come in earlier tomorrow to make, as long as we make up those hours within the four days. And that's one thing that Derek was really like graciously, you know, flex hours. You use it when you want to. You know, I have the motor vehicle reports that I've gotta do. Karen's got other deadlines. I've got other deadlines. Election time is crazy. So we definitely need that extra hours.
My concern is more that you just, as long as you get your stuff done.
Yeah.
When I have that exact forty hours, it isn't the thing. It's just that you're getting.
Yep. Well, for example, for example, currently, we really have like a half hour a day every day that we have like for closed time. If you wanted to look at forty hour week over it, I mean, because we're open eight to three thirty, Monday through Friday, either Sue or I take one, you know, out of head while we're doing things. So that's a half hour a day where we are of uninterrupted time, which really is, you know, I mean, it's nothing. This, on a select board week, if there's a meeting for the select board at least, that will give us five hours in the week that should be uninterrupted. On a non-select board week, assuming there's a non-work session that you're attending, we could have up to seven hours a week, which, I mean, I, that's, I mean, I, that's at least some time that we can sit down uninterrupted.
Well, why don't we give it three months and then just talk about how it's going? Is that sound good?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Derek, the ordinance review committee.
Uh, you didn't bring your document with you that I sent you, right?
I didn't see it.
No, I sent it to you a while ago.
Oh, then, yeah.
Right.
I did see that one.
Because I didn't know if we were gonna do a work session, work on if you had changes to that or not, and if you were bringing them. I think you and Aina probably grabbed what I had when you had your discussion.
Well, Aina, Aina and I are looking at a, an ordinance review committee, sort of like comp, uh, implementation. And
They'll do that, too.
My biggest question was, yeah, are they gonna do it all?
I think that's their job is to take ordinances that, and, and the other boards can write the, some trial language, or, or, uh, let's say, I know the historic preservation's looking at stuff, but the ultimate advisors of ordinance review to the select board would be that committee, and that committee would be made up of planning board members,
ZBA.
ZBA, historic preservation. I would be there, and Sean would be there as advisory for them. It could be a couple of members from large historic preservation. So really, seven is probably the match. You wanna go on, on voting members for that. Um, and, uh, I forget, I'm looking for it. I think utility board would be also wise, because they know those particular ordinances. So that's what you want, are the busiest committees.
Any ones that.
Harbor committee, who doesn't hurt either. So how many we have? Six?
Utility board, harbor, that's five.
Five.
Right, who am I missing? Planning, ZDA, utility, harbor.
Historic preservation.
Historic preservation. Yeah.
Um, and then, uh,
I have a fine.
Sean, C D.
But not as, we as ex officio, we're not voting, we don't. Right.
Five.
And it's usually five regular members and two alternates. Is that?
Well, on this one here, I think you want a couple of members from the large that are just so, make it like seven, and you don't need the.
Two members of the, of the community at large.
I think so, yeah. And if you wanna do some alternates, you can, but that's usually about the right size for it. Because you want that.
Fire department?
Uh, you could have somebody from the fire department if they're, and we don't really do that fire marshal code stuff right now. So, uh, I would, if we were like actively enforcing with a fire inspector, say yes. But I wouldn't be opposed to having one, if somebody has the time uh, to be the member at large.
Um, I'm good with this. So would you like us to announce at our next meeting, maybe not the one that's or do, or do it?
I wanna, I wanna send, well, I wanna create, right, I think that's the thing. And that's, that's what I'm looking for now, is when I sent that off to you. Because I think you wanna work that ordinance a little bit and then do it. And why am I not?
Aina has written a, a really nice, uh, statement about the purpose.
Yeah, I'm looking for the thing right now.
Okay, so we need to do a little bit more work. And then we'll get it done.
Yeah, I don't know why it's sent from me.
Yeah, I never seen.
The problem is I pull everything out of here. So this search doesn't always look in my archives. So I'll have to find out.
And I'll, I'll look back over.
Yeah, I know I'm gonna find them in a minute.
Um, well, it's okay. Let's move on. Um, so how's school three done?
Uh, I haven't been up since this morning to find out, uh, but I know the excavator was delivered. Uh, it's up there. I do see what looks like cones in the street up there now. So that's happened since I last worked. So they're moving in now.
Amy from the church, Amy the bat, the minister, she came in this afternoon because she couldn't find the diagram and the information that you had passed out.
Which is on the door out front when you first walked in.
Copy to pass out to church people. So anyway, she came in and got some copies, and she said that they had started doing things up there. She probably set up doing things.
And then, yeah, and then Courtney Berry was here a little later this afternoon, and she said they had just started, so.
And everybody there, whether I hand delivered it or left it with them, has that in their possession, which lays out, you know, the rules of travel and expected timeframe, um, and how to coordinate with people, including libraries. So I try to
Thank you.
lay out the traffic patterns the best I can and let people know.
You did a good job.
Why, thank you. I appreciate that. I wouldn't have been able to do that had you not appointed me as road commissioner at the last meeting. I just.
Okay, so, uh, Water Street concrete blocks. I know that we sent some emails around and we talked about that. They are much lighter than normal barriers. Um, and part of the issue in, uh, is that, well, when Gordon came in and was talking about just putting in the normal barriers, that people from FEMA indicated that we shouldn't be putting anything down.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't FEMA. It was the guardrail guys. When I talked to them, they said, if you have the unstable bank there down below or anything else, you shouldn't be vibrating, pounding in, or digging into those surfaces and creating looser soil around them. So the whole idea behind those blocks were, for one thing, we originally talked about putting some rocks there, and lawyers said those, a car hits them and launches them, that will be a problem. These are heavy enough to do that. But also, the theory was that the soil up there, okay, we put them on there. So it's not like they're leaning this way. The soil is flat there. And the idea was that weight would also compact those soils, so it wouldn't do that. Now, is that perfect engineering science? I have no idea. But it provided the safety we needed, and then also holding that soil compact. So there isn't water running right through those areas and everything else. In between the voids, there's three feet in between them, there's still, you know, that there. So I get a discussion with G E I and, uh, about engineering. And the original idea was that I would have them also look at that, whoever ends up getting that Water Street engineering project. Of course, I'm still working with FEMA on that one, uh, because they wanna only look at the scarified areas where there's mud down below, let's say, and where it's happened. I've said, well, I've already had a couple of trees that have come down since we need to look all the way to the top of the embankment. So they're like, well, that isn't really the scope of the project. So, um, and I'm like, well, that's not gonna fix anything up above coming down by just putting rocks on top of the scarified area. So I'm still kind of fighting with FEMA, hoping that they will allow me to go to the top of the slope. Otherwise, we're gonna have to take our own infrastructure funds out of it. But when I talked to G E I this week, um, I will, uh, and all that's the other thing is, is does this include the permitting or not? Because it doesn't really state. The permitting is the toughest part of this whole thing. So, um, but, so that's kind of where we are. And, uh, you know, if those, if, if they say, okay, move them off the shoulder, we'll just shrink down the sides of the road and put them on the pavement. But I thought it would be better not to put it on the pavement. So.
Yeah, it's already pretty narrow.
Yeah, right. Because that would shrink it down by another foot, or two feet, really. Because they're two by two by three, I think. So, um, but we'll, we'll get a, a thought on it. There, there was a reason that I waited almost a month or so to put those out, so that we could get the public comments. We know that there's a chance people could get graffiti on. If somebody wants to lay on their belly and graffiti that, I'm thinking, somebody's probably gonna be like, why is that guy laying on my belly? Because they, they're only this tall. So, you know, I guess you can get good with it. But I already told Joe, we'll buy some black paint, and if somebody graffiti something over it, we'll do it. But I also, when we put them there before, I said to Sue and Karen, I said, if people, you know, while they were going in, I made jokes, but I wasn't really joking. If you guys really wanna color those, like you see the, you know, the Jersey barriers in the downtowns and put flowers on them or do whatever, do it while it's there, you know. But, so we'll see. Right now, they're still just concrete colored. They're still cheering for that fact.
You know, maybe we can add it already, add it to school as a, as an aid project, or well, already, and you paint them.
And I'll be looking at, looking at it. One of the things that, the other thing I talked to Joe was, I said, when we start this engineering, we gotta whack down all the bamboo out of there. So that's gonna be fun, too, because the first step of doing that is gonna be getting digitized, you know, contour lines for all of the grades in those areas. And don't forget, FEMA's given me the money, like the forty nine thousand, I think it is, but it's only for these little voids in between. And I've already said, well, wait, we can't be ignoring this other area above ten feet or to the right or the left, because in between each of those fishing shacks is a void of like six feet. Some of them have already stabilized between the road and that area, and some are pretty raw. And so, um, and those areas, while they're pretty stable right there, because the water hasn't crashed into them, as soon as we start hardening the surfaces or something else, that's what happens. So like, all of those, not all of them, but they will eventually all have some type of a seawall or structure. And that's why these little voids have been taking the damage, because they're getting the fury of the water coming in there. And it's just bouncing off their block walls, there's concrete walls and other places. So the energy is higher in those little spots. So when we start doing something there, is that gonna push that towards these homes, too? I don't know. But that's the last thing I want, is water during a swarm coming up swirling between those places and the embankment creating another issue. So.
We need a plan for the pair.
Right. And that's the whole idea. So, but I may be saying we're gonna spend some of our own money to get all the way to the top of the bank uh, for this engineering, once I get some clarity from FEMA and Mima.
All right. Do you have any general sense of timeline on this? Or we may not have enough information to really know. Obviously, we don't know the scope and, and.
Well, it'll be like. Well, once we get the engineering done, well, I think I have asked to extend it all the way to next September. I'm hoping the engineering can be done like this year and be done by winter time. But then, their estimates for these two spots, I think Fort Madison was like three hundred and eighty thousand, and this was like seven hundred and fifty thousand, just to do that work. So, um, and that's if Army Corps and everybody else says, yes, you can go here, or you can rebuild shoulders or do whatever it is. But that's only according to theirs, is that lower level. It doesn't even include up the street. So that means it will be a bond, let's say. And if people say, no, we don't wanna borrow that, then it could be a while. Um, so, and of course, there's this new loan program they're gonna try to get from the state that I submitted both of these projects for, um, as, you know, low interest, like one percent money or something. But still,
Right.
it's still gonna be a sizable amount of money.
And Gordon had an additional comment the last meeting about snow removal.
Yeah.
And, and I don't, obviously, we're not in the winter season, but, um, the, the contractor that we use for snow removal, have we sought any opinion from them about the barriers being there? Do we know if this might pose an issue for them in terms of, you know, moving the snow and, and moving it off the roads in the winter if they're?
Well, I'll have to talk to them. Like I said, the, most of these are lined up with the edge of pavement right now, and that's why I didn't put the pavement there. At first, I was gonna put some further out, and then I'm like, from a driver safety, whether it's a plow truck or anything else, you need a consistent line. That's why I also put the little reflectors on there, so people would see the reflectors, and those go every other one. But it's to kind of warn them. So it'd just be that they need to, um, stay to the right of it. And I don't know if they wing back that far anyways in that spot. I'm guessing if they do, those fishing shacks that have broken windows from like the stuff shooting off there.
To prevent that.
So, right. But don't forget, with, there's only a money, one way to go, and that's gonna be to the right. So the snow's gonna go in that direction. Um, like towards that. So I'm guessing they'll, that road's gonna get probably pretty narrow, and we may need to do a no parking all the time, snow ban during the winter time on that road for that reason, and not allow any on-street parking, um, during that time. Because the snowbanks very well could be the thing that narrows that road down to like being one lane totally.
Right, you know, and to Gordon, too, he was concerned about, you know, could the blocks be moved? You know, with the force of a snowplow that accidentally hit them. And then I, I don't know.
I think it, I think if they whack it hard enough, they could easily.
I would expect they're gonna put the, you know, sticks, the sticks on the end of them, you know, like the markers. So if there was a lot of snow, you'd be.
Yeah, because in a snowy winter, it's conceivable that the barriers could actually be covered.
Exactly.
Right.
You don't see the reflectors and.
Like David had, was on my driveway, he always puts those, takes them off.
Of course. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Kangamangas Highway in New Hampshire that goes across. But if you ever go there in the fall, you will notice that they have like twenty foot tree branches that attach to all of these little, like, you know, they have the red and the green little markers on the side. They have those in there to denote where the road is, because that sometimes gets like twenty feet of snow up through there. So that's why they have these sticks. And you're like, why are those sticks sticking up? It's because they're planning on doing those. So I don't think we'll be that crude, but you never know. I could say, hey, guys, maybe we'll, maybe we'll find a new use for the bamboo or Japanese knotweed, and we'll use those as the, uh, markers. Right.
Is there a rule with FEMA and Mima? Do we, do we have to do both Fort Madison and Water Street at the same time?
No.
Can we, can we opt to just do Water Street and wait on Fort Madison?
Yeah. And that's the other thing. I'm hoping that we'll be able to flip this into possibly a hazard mitigation type of remediation thing, using the same, like, designation, because that was the original idea, was, okay, we'll, we'll change that. But I'm hoping that stays open and they'll have a pool of funds, because I'd love to have them pay for eighty-five, ninety percent of that. Then it would be much easier. So we'll see how that goes. Of course, there's also the cost benefit analysis and all this other stuff that goes into it. So what, I gotta figure out which program we might be eligible for, but we need to get the scope and all that figured out.
Okay, great. Yes. Hey, parking tickets and signs. So we talked about this a little bit at town and town, but do we have to have all new signs? But.
I don't know yet. I'm, I actually have reached out, and I don't think I heard back today again on that. I, uh, actually followed it up with a question to main municipal, because I had asked Kate Dooford, hey, Kate, you must have seen this bill coming. What was the thought on, what is it? And, uh, so she said, oh, reach out to legal. So I took Karen's original, and I reached out to legal. And as of this morning, I hadn't seen it, but I did get the acknowledgement. They got it on Friday when I sent it to them. So, um, yeah, we gotta figure it out. The law talks about entrances and exits to parking areas, okay? So I, and when the, when it was originally in the committee, it didn't say anything about parking lots or anything else. And those are usually the predatory parking areas or rules. Uh, you park in a garage or something, and then all of a sudden, they boot your car, or they tow it away. And so that's what I'm guessing was happening at USM and other places, that you didn't have a student parking pass or whatever, and your car would be gone, or they would hit you with a higher than usual ticket. Um, but if it is on the roads also, then we'll have to put something on those. I'm guessing that, uh, towns are gonna get really ugly, because they put a zero dollar fiscal impact on that. And, uh, and it should have been a mandate that had a fiscal tag to it and gone to appropriations, and it did not. And so therefore, it's an unfunded mandate. Is that legal? There's all kinds of questions like that. And I'm not gonna be the one to lawyer up on that. I'll let the city of Portland, that probably has thousands of parking signs, if that's what it comes to. So it's a little early, but uh, Sue and Karen already mentioned, well, if we have to, we'll just get something we can stick on our signs in, in the interim until we, um, you know, until we replace them, if that was the case. But, um, I'll let you know, hopefully at the next meeting, I'll have that legal opinion back that will tell me, um, what it is.
But the way we understand it is that in the time being, while we're trying to iron this all out, the that doesn't become into, uh, into effect until the end of September, like September twenty-third anyway. So we.
Just to take us the way we.
So tickets are valid right now.
We're okay right now. We just have to figure out something.
Right.
By September.
Okay.
However, are two of this is, I wanna do a warning, okay? And I want it retroactive, back to Monday, let's say. Um, and that is, okay, everybody realizes we now have our traffic calming, we have a new parking enforcement person, and that we will uh, waive the first ticket as a warning. I talked to Sheila about getting the spreadsheet together so we can track it by license plate. And it's a lifetime warning. Well, unless you get a, actually, people might get a second shot if they haven't got their new plates, right? So they could easily get a new plate in between. But if they're on that list, it's a forever list, okay? That license plate goes on there. Uh, and I guess everybody could get a freebie if we ever do another license. What's that happen? Every like fifteen years or something when we do? Plates?
People can switch plates.
Right. But I know, I think it's only happened, I remember like three times in my career.
So I like, I like the idea. Oh, hang on. That's a nice way to start. I mean, oh, you know, like that.
Um, I have no problem with the thing, as long as it doesn't fall on us to do more work. If, if the new parking ticket officer wants to take up that system, that's fine, because cracking it like that, like we had the tiered first offense, second offense, third offense ticket, which never really got off the ground, because we just don't have,
Right.
we don't have.
We don't have the software, we don't have the manpower, we don't have any of that. What we, what we used to do. With our past ticketing officer, and yeah, it, the ball kinda got dropped on this time around. Is that when we had, like this time, we had a transitional period with a new parking ticket officer. We hadn't had one several months. And now all of a sudden, we're issuing out tickets. When the students come back to town, Scotty always put warnings for the first week or two.
Great.
Uh when we had overnight parking ban, there was a warning period for the first week or two. We should have done a warning period for this. So the last week, Karen and I have been flooded with parking ticket concerns. And that was one thing that we wanted to bring from the front office to you guys and say. We feel, in all fairness, that we probably could treat these ones that have been issued out. I mean, we've had. The MMA construction workers coming up here, and we we did talk about that at town gown to kind of tighten that back up again. And and we've told them that, you know, this is our bus- past team's busy time. And the MMA project, the first time we're kind of overlapping, so we all have to work together, you know, try to carpool. MMA told us, you guys have free parking up there, and the big Chad guy said, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna work this stuff out. We're, so we just feel like, in all fairness, like there'd be this grace period of.
Fine with that. I, I'm fine with the grace period, and I'm fine with the warning, and I think it's great when the MMA students come back to prepare first tickets are ones. Um as long as uh the new traffic enforcement officer can figure out a way to.
Crack them, right? Well, I'm gonna throw something else out there. Remember that we have budgeting for ten hours a week for Sheila. Um Sue and I know exactly how long it is to sit there and put stuff into a spreadsheet, and you won't have any traffic enforcement. She's putting stuff, I mean, you know, uh for ten hours a week, how much time do you have? So I would, there again, it'll end up falling back here, so.
Well, we don't want it to fall back, right, so.
I mean, I think that, I think that, I think that being, you know, as Sue said, if we can put out there, you know. We could put something in the newspaper and on the website, you know, we have a new, new traffic enforcement. Um we have rethought it, and if you got a ticket issued between this date and, and then pick another date, consider it a warning.
Yeah.
However, starting at this date, tickets will do it, and I think that's fair warning for everybody. And then we may not need to.
I mean, would you wanna say between now and August fifteenth? It's a crazy age warning period. I mean, it's a little bit long. She's already been here for a week, but you know. It it's gonna take at least that long to get, get the word out, you know, I mean.
Well, if we do it that way, then every year in August is gonna be uh a parking traffic holiday, because you got incoming.
And then you have the students that are gonna come off the fifteenth, and so if you've all of a sudden, you've started issuing tickets, the, when they first show up, so.
But I, but my feeling is, after the town and gown meeting, I'm not feeling like we need to do a grace period, because. You know, my, my understanding was at the meeting that they're really gonna let the students know that parking's being enforced, and it's just one of the rules they have to follow.
Well, I mean, I think, I think there's something, though, for the town to. Appear welcoming to to the students and to give people a warning, like even if a ticket's not issued, if Sheila had something. I don't know if we've used anything in the past that can just be put on the windshield to say, hey, you would have gotten a ticket, this is your warning, so a ticket isn't produced.
It was never really a, a warning period when the the students arrived back to town. Tickets were issued. The warning was like when we had, you know. The period of time, like right now, we had a void of no tickets for the longest time.
Right.
Being issued, and then all of a sudden, people are getting tickets. The warnings were Scotty would put a colored piece of paper on windshields for the first week. When we changed the pattern to no overnight parking.
Right.
So to give the stu- the students and anybody else.
And I think that's.
In, you know, tenants who live on Main Street, anybody, that awareness that now we're switching over from Nov- November first to April thirtieth. You can't park on any streets overnight. So it wasn't really, you know, those were really the only big.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, right now, our issue's been, we haven't written out tickets for months, not all summer long, and now all of a sudden, people are getting tickets.
It's not just the uh contractors from the Maritime Academy. We've had business people who have parked places, you know, for the last. Four months or however long it's been, and all of a sudden, now.
They're getting tickets.
They're getting it, they're getting a ticket, and actually, in one spot, um it was in the two-hour spot, but it was one of those that didn't get stenciled. So, you know, I mean, there's, there's that too. Um and then we had somebody who is living down in Jim Jennings Building, and of course, they've been there all winter and there. And then all of a sudden, they're getting, you know, and I mean, so for something that they've been doing for the last six months, I mean, they knew about the overnight parking when the text came out. But then this summer, they, you know, had been parking, you know, like even on the town dock for more than four hours, or in a two-hour spot for more than two hours, and then all of a sudden, bam, they're getting tickets. Uh you know, without, a- and they're, I mean, they understand it now. Um and so I think, you know, if there was maybe, you know, and had we been thinking ahead of time. Then we probably could have just said, you know, but Sheila, right, you know, Sheila, just put some, you know, and even if you use a ticket, but write down. Scotty would write down warning, write down warning on it, and then that way it brings it, and do that for like two weeks or something, the first few weeks of your.
Well, that's for, then it's really, then it's, it's, I would say, we should just have a conversation with Sheila, you can have a conversation, Sheila, you know, you know. Do warnings for another week and then, you know, let's say, you know.
Well, we put something out.
Yeah.
In the press.
I mean, I, I guess you say, like when I was down in Connecticut a couple of weeks ago, I went to a town that I hadn't been to before. You got a parking ticket, pay the ticket. I mean, like, you know, like part of this, part of life, you gotta follow, you know.
So let's, let's, why don't we do it through August first?
Okay.
That seems better.
Okay.
Jim's will be back, honestly.
Yeah.
It's just fair.
Few weeks. And and what we can do is we'll put out some alerts.
Yeah.
And then obviously, the, this is a little bit of a different structure today, so the press isn't here. But again, what we'll make a list of some of these things on your regular meeting, we'll make an announcement, a better announcement and transparency, help to get the word out.
Was just trying to think. I have one more question on that, but I'm uh I'm drawing a blank now on the whole thing, so. But so we're not doing one when the students come back?
Yeah.
Good.
I don't think we should. I mean, I think, I think it's, I think it's MMA's responsibility to let the students know we forced parking.
Yeah, but I think, I think last year, Scotty, did you, did you have good success with the students who were parking up on like Wadsworth Cove Road? And not, I mean, not initially, but in talking with them, when they realized that they shouldn't be parking there.
Always, doctor, whoever, God, who in the house, not anymore, and they all get it, and I think myself. Best idea of not to write out tickets, it's just to do like you make up these orange cards and just walk by everyone open from one windshield. And and we don't have to write a ticket, you're not doing, but they get the message this week that on August first. These are we tickets.
Yeah.
Don't waste time having somebody write warning ticket. And you just do it to everybody, even if they're legally.
Yeah, I'm concerned if they get a warning ticket, they're still gonna land in your office, thinking, do I have to pay this? Like they may still.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can make up colored, yeah, colored, and just.
Yeah.
You know, maybe have some that say, you know, like some that are specifically for the town dock that say, you know, this is a four-hour parking limit here. Or one hour along the front of the town dock, and then maybe this is a two-hour parking section for Lower Main.
Yeah, you know, I mean, today's already Monday, August first is Friday. I mean, I, I would kind of be in favor of going like through next Friday or something to. Allow the cars to make Sheila to work with them and have that, you know, something, something like that.
That seems.
Where were, where are you guys on sign?
On signs.
There's no signs around. You know, I've been waiting about this for years.
No parking signs?
I don't think it's fair to give people tickets on the town dock and when there's no signs.
Yeah, there is no sign going down to the town dock that says there's a four-hour limit.
Yeah, I think that was.
That's a, that's an issue.
Yeah.
I mean, that really is an issue.
Some of the signs that you see around, you think they're gone, the lettering is gone. I mean, you need some, you need to go around town. And find out how many signs we need this week, in the next couple of days, and order them and get them up before.
But can that, Derek, can that be something that Sheila does, like in her time now, actually not be writing tickets, but be doing a sign inventory? And then when we have signs in place.
That's a great.
That that verify.
Good.
And then we can do a warning period, and then we can start issuing tickets. It might take a couple of months, but to really, in fairness, to everybody. Yeah, I mean, otherwise, we're holding.
Otherwise, it's, it's, it's.
accountable for things they're not aware, particularly if they don't live here in town.
Okay, that's a great idea.
Problem, the one thing with the signs are that you get the the description and the ordinance, so is where we put them. And so that's where I was talking about, we're gonna have to do something with, so they can sit inside these concrete. Like stands, if you will. I don't think you want me blasting through or trying to blast through all the concrete to put in all these signs there. So that's one of the concerns I have with that.
And I don't think.
Cuz you know.
Breaking signs until we know what the legal.
Right, right, exactly.
If we have some spares out at the transfer station, can replace some, that's great, but if not, then, you know, I think we just need an individual.
Right.
I think going through a thoughtful process, I think it's.
Yeah.
Would be the best.
Yeah, so. Yep.
Thank you for raising.
Thanks. Cuz I do have Scots list also that he provided where we needed some.
Right.
Okay, um where are we standing on that? Want to do something to that?
Nothing. I'm not doing a thing until the DEP gets back to me, because they said they need to do the PFAS testing out there, and uh Matt seems to be pretty busy. And you know, I did catch, touch base with them again. Um of course, uh he also mentioned, if we go that route, we're gonna have to hire a consultant. And I said, okay, what's the consultant supposed to do? So he's never really told me what that means either. Um but I'm guessing that person would have to do testing, is my thought. Uh of of the water or their individual wells, and that's the other thing, the board's gonna have to decide on this if. Uh because some of them don't have wells, okay? They never put them in, okay? The, they were predated, so you could say, oh, well. Not our problem. I don't think that's gonna go over very well, and some of them, I have no idea if they filled in the wells, what the, if they're active. Whether uh they truly are clear or anything else, and then you're talking about they no longer have pumps, are you going to put that? Onto the homeowners when the time comes, too. Those are some of the things that were discussed back when this last was discussed also.
There's actually only one, one property that does not have their own well. I mean, the other two had their own wells previously. I don't know what the states of those wells have. And the one that does not have a well is not one of them that's actually in the original.
Right, right. So one of the persons that said, oh, I didn't have a well, the, because I apparently. I don't know, I'm assuming it was said, don't bother trying to do a well, you're just gonna find salt in it, cuz this house and this house both have salt in the well, so you're gonna have it. So you might as well just hook up to this one sixty-six well. So then they are going to get that argument that, oh, wait, now you expect me to spend ten thousand dollars or whatever it is on well.
I think one of the other options that had been talked about is seeing if the town can just give. Our, you know, the, the well that we have on the Scots property. I mean, we'd have to get the Scots to go along with it, because there's a lease. But give them that building, that well and all of the equipment, and then here you go, you guys are now owners of it, as opposed to the town being owner of it. I think that was the thought.
Right.
That had been had before, not necessarily that they had to go back on their own well, but that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can say two out of three or whatever do not wanna do that, because that has an ongoing cost of. Thousand dollars a year or whatever it is that we spend. We have a budget of like four thousand, I think, for maintenance and stuff like that. Everything's good, so that's part of the whole, whole problem, and they would end up having to do testing also. Because it would be considered, I believe, a public drinking water source. Right now, I think Adam does that for us, but they would have to do that. So those are the things the board's gonna have to decide. And I'm going to tell you the all, that is the easy thing, but I threw that out there, and I know two of the owners that I talked to, they're not interested in that part of it. And we don't even know yet what the wells, you know, are yet, until you test their private wells to see if they're still clean. They've been sitting there stagnant, no use out of them. So I don't know. I know that was the thing that came up last time when this was seriously looked at, was they still had. Apparently, there's no specific thing that says over a certain amount, there's salt or chloride contamination. But it was still at a higher level than it was supposed to be. So. All right.
Hey, pop's implementation. I, and I have been meaning, the once enormous plan. Implementation committee has been uh taken down quite a bit. It's gonna be a lot, a lot better. Um this ordinance review committee will, but taking a lot of the work, because. Anything that has to do with changing the ordinance, the vote before this, and then this committee will make a recommendation to us. Or planning, or you know, or whoever, they'll make a recommendation of the, of the change.
Are we, are we looking to the ordinance, you committed to write ordinances or review what's already been written by?
They're gonna, they're, they're gonna review what's been.
And they write the language to go off.
Says, and now they have to go through legal, but then it would be a recommendation to be select for. Um there's also um, I didn't bring my notes, I know there's a committee, um. Well, we have a lot of things that are just harder, that stay, that sort of are gonna stay with the Harvard Committee. Um we have, oh, we have a natural resources climate change committee, so everything for natural resources and climate will go into that committee. Um and we.
And look at water resources?
Water resources is its own, yeah.
Standroom.
It's Canada.
Has set up.
Gossiping. And housing, we've already got.
Uh and we've talked about community.
And right, that was a, that was one, the community. So there are lots of things, especially things from the chapter on. That dealt with recreation or public facilities, and those things can go to the community committee, who can work through those and then give us recommendations of what.
And there's a cou- couple of things related to um maybe there's senior housing, maybe you know, in collaboration with senior housing concepts. Maybe there's a more social side to linking up the ser- other services and other, other initiatives, so there might be, might be, so there's a few activities in it.
And there were several objectives, well, I think that we didn't always understand what's an objective, what's a strategy, what's an action, but anyway. There were several of them that were the same in different chapters. So if those chapters are going to, for instance, um the community committee and the housing committee. Then at some point, they need to work together on the document and see what they want to do. So, um, so we're still going through each strategy and placement in the right bucket. And then once we have all worked out, Ian has worked on a really nice mandate for each committee. And um very clear rules, very rules of how to do it, right? But also a very mission, like what, what you're supposed to do. Um and then we will, thank you.
That's why I wasn't, I didn't do as an attachment, I threw it in the side of the.
And then we will um, we will get it to edit it again, so to look in. Before we, and then you can give us the feedback on what you wanna add.
And I would just like to throw out a reminder to everybody, especially if this ordinance committee comes about. And there's a reality.
We will.
That there are like things that people need to be aware of and timeframes, and, and they make recommendations to the select board. But it's not the select board that's gonna be approving those recommendations. They have to go to town.
Oh, right.
And we also know that, you know, things have gone to town vote, and a lot of work gets put into things.
Right.
And then it's not passed, so everybody just needs to be aware that it has to go to a town vote.
It has to go to a town vote, and what I think I'd rather see is instead of sending a big package as one thing for a vote, they need to break it up. Because I don't want to lose five things, one thing is bad. Um but I agree, they also need to be to, to be told from together. This is how you schedule the meeting. This is when you need to talk to Sue. This is, you know, this is how you get on the calendar. You have to choose a chair and a co-chair and a, or we'll, we'll make sure. Okay. Um, so now we can review. Or, uh, updates. And it looks like we have four to consider at the beginning of the minute. Um. There's post sports for planning board is a regular member, I will recuse myself. Charles Hodgkins as, um, did he wanna be a regular member or an alternate member? On the planning board, or do we have?
He didn't really specify, but we have two openings.
Then what?
Because Don Tenny stepped down as a regular member. To an alternate, so that would make a full board for these two appointments would make a full board of regular members and one alternate position open.
Okay. And then cemetery, um, Kathy Eden. As a regular member and Ruth Eaton, Ruth Eaton, so.
Okay, and we'll go through these in a few minutes.
Yeah, and did everybody get to see Charles Hodgkins letter? It was, it was real.
He says in his letter, he wants to join as an alter.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought he said. Wanted to be an alternate, I thought.
Okay, well, we can change that and then so then what will happen there is that we have one regular. Position opens.
I believe, can you change this?
If you guys appoint him today to be alternate and something changes, we'll bring it to another meeting and then to move up to a regular member service.
Okay. Um, Derek.
Yeah.
Talk trash.
Yeah, I don't know if we're really.
Yep, as he wants to. For Charles, can we approve later today that he be approved? For regular or alternate based on what whatever you choose. Yes, Charles, and then we get it done.
Yeah, then we go, yeah.
Thank you.
Right, let's do that, let's do that, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there.
Uh, track, well, I'm hoping to have Michael Carroll come in and talk about pros and cons and everything else. Cause there's a lot of stuff to think about when we get into this grasp. I don't know if I sent you my whole laundry list of things to. Think about, but it could easily be layout. One of the things I heard in Bucksport, for instance, who just eliminated. Recycling, so now it's one bin all in. And so I was there one Sunday, Sunday's a fairly busy day at Bucksport Transfer Station and the hopper had the mountain. Okay, and I don't know if you have been there, but the mountain is basically, it looks like a Christmas tree of trash, cause I keep piling it till it starts to fall down and. So they had at one of the public works, old dump trucks backed up to where like one of their rollaway dumpsters for bulky waste. Or metal or whatever it was. And, uh, nice and ah, uh, nice, you got the dump truck here. And he goes, well, it is a dump truck, but this isn't gonna happen. Once we do that, we're gonna shut the facility down as soon as we're at capacity on any given day. Cause they only have one hopper. So like in Casco Naples, we had two hoppers because we knew and it also compacted, you know, the trash, but. Once it got full, found out we did need a a second one. So we basically have an open container down there with our trash in, we don't compact or anything else. So we know the volume's going to go up. I did discuss with Karen and I'll let her explain. Cause I'm a little thick, apparently. I I finally got what she was saying. But it took us about ten to fifteen minutes. So because I would say, uh-oh, now we're gonna have stickers that, you know, if everything goes into the trash. People are gonna be throwing away more trash bags. But as Karen told me, uh, explain it, cause I don't wanna mess it up.
We base our sticker income, what people pay, when people pay a dollar for the up to fifteen pounds or the two dollars for thirty five pounds. We have been keeping trash or a crap of. Our per time costs for solid waste. And we keep track of the dumpster fees and the transportation. We wanna add those three things together. And then hopefully make it so that that's paying for itself. Niners time was never in there. Derek was thinking that if we were adding more. Adding recycling into it somehow that we were going to be. Like we should take our sticker prices down. And I said, well, no, because we've never added recycling into the equation. So we should have, I mean, if everything is going as solid waste. We're still gonna keep in, cause we're adding up. How many pounds are in there, how many tons are in there? What our transportation fees are and. Our, our cost to rent a dumpster. So I'm anticipating that. Our, our dollar and two dollar, at least for the time being, will stay the same unless. Our price per time go, ends up going.
And that will add, that will end up creating more revenue, but we will end up on the other side reducing. Right, so we'll be saving, cause recycling is twice the cost already.
Recycling, we pay two hundred and twenty five dollars a ton for rather than, rather than, uh, about eighty dollars for solid waste. However, recycling is all paid for by taxpayer dollars because we have to. That was one of the, one of the things that they had to do that. So we will be having less taxpayer dollars going towards our transfer station. We'll still have taxpayer dollars going towards it, cause we. We had, it sort of set it up where we didn't want Niners, you know, our attendance time. Um, and a few other things, we didn't want those to be.
But I, I would.
Part of the days you go.
I mean, if you look at how much goes into recycling now. I mean, especially in the summer, I mean, just all the people with their cardboard boxes and I mean. Like tho- the those trash dumpsters are, the trump, the trash dumpster is gonna fill up really quick.
We're still gonna have to tell people that they're gonna wanna, you know, I mean, I cut, having people cut their cardboard boxes in the two foot by two foot. I mean, that saved us so many transportation threats. We're gonna still tell people that they've gotta do that. I mean, people can't just take an empty box, you know, toss it in there.
So help me make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So if if we're doing this, then. There's one depository for solid waste and our recyclables. Is that correct? We're not dividing them up?
We're not dividing them up because they'll actually, so there won't be two, I mean, it's.
Right.
We probably will have to have more solid waste containers.
Sure, right, but everything's gonna go.
Everything's gonna go into one.
So for residents who are buying their trash stickers, are they gonna need to buy more trash stickers? Cause they're having to buy trash stickers to now cover the recyclables.
Correct.
Which they're not currently buying trash stickers for, because that's covered by town costs.
Correct, but yet their tax bills. Won't be paying for that two hundred and twenty five dollars a ton recycling anymore, so theoretically.
After next year, next year's budget will.
It all goes in one bag.
Right, everything does, there's, they need to do do some campaigning, so there's. Several little things there that I have questions, that's why I have asked Mike to give us a date where he can come out. Cause the whole idea is some towns have right now chosen to still sort the recycling. The machinery in the plant, and I've also talked about actually getting us a tour of the plant so that we can go do that. I know Karen went. I wanna, at one time when they were first building it, uh, and when it was operational for a while. Um, but they are now testing it out. That whole thing sorts the recycling and everything else, so we will be basically. Having an extra dumpster and its redundancy of cost to go through that. So they will take it, it goes through, it's, uh. It it's, uh, people pick out the stuff as it comes through for some things, there's air that shoots to knock different things out. So it's all like an automated system that sorts the recycling out. And in this case, like the cardboards, like. Greasy pizza boxes aren't supposed to be recycled, right? Because they mess up the, uh, the product of recycling. This case, they're gasifying stuff and making a natural gas, like through like the paper processing of, uh. Anaerobic digestion like happens in our sewer treatment plant. Uh, and, um, so basically. So they are used, like. Food wrappers and things like that, not supposed to be recycled. Now it doesn't matter because they need that to throw it through and then they're gonna make these bio bricks. Or something that you can burn in a pellet stove or something. I don't know exactly all the uses. But they're gonna capture this gas which pays for the, uh, to heat the plant, cool the plant and everything else. Um, but the key is, it's just a redundant action to sort your recycling at this point because. That's what the machinery is made to do. And, um, but there's other questions like, um, cause I'm just asked, okay, uh, if whether or not we should be. Eventually like covering up our, our dumpsters or something, right? Which may be something we look at long term, because if it's wet, it depends on how often it gets trucked out and everything. And whether or not, like I have, is wet cardboard good or bad? Right now, I believe we have it kinda covered in our recycling thing, but now it's gonna be in an, if it's in an open bin. Is that a problem? Are they gonna kick back all this stuff and say, no, you can't do that, cause it's wet? So those are the questions I have for them. The other thing is they've created a hub and spoke model for trucking. And the idea is some of these places, Whiz Cassett, for instance, would have to drive all the way to Herman. Um, I think some of the down east communities that go there, so they are creating in out. In the western Maine area like Rumford, uh, area, they all go here. Well, it doesn't make sense, cause some of them have garbage packer trucks, they do curbside pickup and then they take off, they drive all the way to Herman. So the, I wanna say M R C, but it's, I guess, the waste hub board. Has discussed all this, so they've created this hub and spoke model where they're going to have satellite transfer stations. Similar to like in Allentown, New Hampshire, we have a satellite casella transfer station, so if people didn't have to go. All the way to Vermont or all the way to Mass, so they deliver it there. And so they've created a trucking division that will now consolidate all that trash, so it'll be weighed on those sites. So you'll, that's how they'll bill. I think we'll end up going straight there, but the question is, are those same trucks the ones that are gonna be coming to haul for us now through? That contract, are we still reliant on getting it to a certain point? So those are the things I'm not sure about. I, because right now, let's say. Dixfield, they would drive to Rumford, right, and, uh. In their packer truck, let's say, and they would deliver that to the transfer station floor, that would be loaded into a waste hub truck to go. To Herman or Handen, is it Herman or Handen? I never know, that side of the interstate?
I think it's in.
Handen, yeah, so. Basically, so in this case, I don't know if the that this fleet of trucks they bought are gonna be. Doing all the trucking or just from the hubs, so for us, it would just go right to. You know, Handen or whatever to the plant, like, cause it wouldn't be right, yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Question, according to this sheet that you gave us, it says effective July seventh, they implemented another tonnage increase.
Yeah.
Was that the eighty dollars a ton that we pay or?
I don't know, I think we pay less than, it's like seventy something.
It was seventy something, I think, I think it will be eighty.
It's like, it's in our contract, it's like four percent or three percent increase per year, so. And of course, they had some revenue from selling some excess land, so this is the first time they've been flush with cash for a while since the perfect days. But everything's coming together, um.
So when does this take effect? When do we need to let people know?
They're gonna be fully functioning in December, so we have time to get there, but eventually. We're gonna want to do it, right? Here's the thing, right now, our recycling gets recycled, so we wanna time it at about the right. Point when we know our trash is going there and going through that system. Otherwise, people can be offended that it's giving landfill.
Also, if we could see this.
It's no guarantee.
If one of us could see it, if, you know, like, before we go. For all, we can say, we've seen it, it works, cause people, people will be concerned.
Right, and I haven't heard back from Mike since I sent him that. On the twenty fourth, so I'm guessing he's pretty straight out, but I know that we can do a tour. And I think that would be useful for the board, useful for public works, could be useful for even Karen to see it again. We never know, we'll, we'll have to close and make a field trip.
What about the contractor's trash? You know, that big bin where.
That bulky waste will still be our responsibility, different operation. So that's one of the things, I forget what they call it, wish cycling. So that's one of the things, gotta be careful of wish cycling, like people go, oh, my hose is made out of rubber, I'm gonna throw it in a bag. No, so that's gonna be part of the whole thing, or people try to do the right thing by recycling stuff that does not. Get recycled, which can screw up the work, so to speak, so. Um, there'll be a educational campaign that they're getting ready to roll out too. But yeah, so bulky waste will still be the same thing, shingles and all that. They're like cardboard and those things, so, all right? So, um, but we'll have to make a decision on when to do that, um, and then we'll go from there.
All right, so we, we. I had a concern, some concerns from some people about the flag staying up on Court Street. Um. From the fourth of July through, uh. Labor Day, there's people who are not happy with that. So I just asked Julie, uh, I asked Dan and Julie from the rec committee to explain their thinking. And they just said, um, they would like to keep them up. Going forward from Labor Day to Veterans Day. Um. And. First, because they feel that it's based on a festive, and second, because they don't really have the resources, nor does the town have the resources. To put them up and take them down and put them up and take them down. So it just makes more sense to leave them up, is how we felt, so.
Do you mean memorial?
Yeah.
Labor Day to Veterans Day.
They typically put them up fourth of July.
Memorial Day to Veterans Day.
Is it memorial day? Cause they never put them up just before the fourth of July.
July this year.
It was, they got put up for fourth of July because it needed to order, no, they didn't have them, I think. I think there, there would be, if they can do it in time, they would probably consider Memorial Day too, but. Definitely by fourth of July and then going through Veterans Day.
But I do understand that they do not have the resources to put them up and take them to, you know, I mean, that's. I don't know. Seems to be asking a lot, but.
The rec committee, I think.
Yeah.
Here, I mean, the, the rec committee, I mean, they're such a small committee and, you know.
I don't, it really doesn't matter to me personally, but I don't, what do you, do you have a thought?
No, I mean, I guess, do people object? Are you guys?
People felt that it is patriotic to have the flags up for the fourth of July, but not. In the time turning fourth of July.
You think it's making a political statement?
Veterans Day.
Yes, that's what people would think.
I mean, that's what I'm assuming, they think.
We have.
I, I think there's symbolism of the flag has evolved over the last several years, that it's been the more, more political and divisive than others.
And so that's what, what we've heard.
But I also think if it's, if it's up that long, that it's just, does it, that's a long time between Memorial Day and Veterans Day.
Mm-hmm.
But that's way too long. To have those flags up, I think, I, I'm not being political either, I'm just saying, if, if, if we. If we're gonna honor the flag, let's honor it and take it down and put it back up, because otherwise, the flags.
So are we asking them to put them up for Memorial Day, take them down, put them up for fourth of July? Take them down and then put them back on Veterans Day, is that?
I don't think they put them up Memorial.
They didn't have them, I don't think, by then this year.
I mean, the, the other possibility is, is have less flags. I mean, so that there's, it's not as much work, I mean, it's a lot of flags. And so, and so if we just had, if we had half as many flags, it's half as much work, I mean.
The idea that they tried to put some more flags up this year is to kinda compensate for. The loss of the balloons, specifically the fourth of July. I mean, I know when I, I'm doing a lot of traveling back and forth between Castine and China these days. And when I go through other communities, they have flags up on their poles.
All the time.
All the time.
Yeah.
I mean, there are some communities that have it up year round.
Yeah.
All the time, so.
I think that's something that should be really seriously considered. Other communities have them also, it's not out of the norm.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just.
Doing anything.
I just know, and I'm only talking for my town clerk ad. Is that we don't have. A lot of volunteers to do this work.
Yeah.
I mean, the rec committee right now had, were lucky that they had two. Young twenty year olds to get up there and put the brackets on and that was, you know, them. Asking them to take times out of their busy, you know, young wives to help out and do that, I mean, I just.
I, I, I think it is hard, it is hard for tasks.
It's the hard part of putting the brackets up amongst the rest of the, right?
Yeah, but it's still volunteer work to have people do this work.
Right. Okay.
Well, I'll put you down on this for volunteer.
A lot of, yeah, a lot of towns have them up all the time.
I mean, you, you, the only thing we could do to, to kind of, um. You know, perhaps not seem political, I mean, because we have this heritage with the four flags. You know, maybe, maybe we alternate the, the, the flags with the French, I mean, just, I'm just saying, if people, if people think we're making a political statement. You know, maybe we can, we can soft. You know, maybe we can, we can soften that because, because of our history, we have more than just the American flag. That's a good idea there.
Right, right. I mean, I think, I think that's, that's a, a nice idea. And I think unless it's a town, we have. A policy in place that talks about when and how we display the flag on, on. Town property. I mean, I was kind of like, yeah, talking out loud here, then I think I would err on the side of. Of, of, of supporting the rec committee and their efforts, right? What they're trying to do is volunteers, cuz I, I'm pretty sure they're not. I don't think it's a political statement. I think they're trying to make the town look festive and inviting. You know, part of maybe economic development, you know, I'm gonna assume might be their motivations. You know, during the times, the months of year where we have some of those celebrations and we have, you know, tourists in town, so.
Have to get out and ask for Veterans Day and that's maybe, I don't know.
I know a lot of towns, like in their historic lighting, that they have the flag holders built into those for that reason. Whole idea why all these towns do that is cuz Gail and Cole Foundation created this flag program. And for like a hundred bucks or something, he uh basically bought all these flags and all the brackets for all the towns. So that's like when you drive through, I will say, back in the day, apparently it's changed for flag etiquette. But I would never in any of my towns let any flag go on any pole that didn't have a light above it. Because the sun's supposed to never set on the American flag. Somebody told me that's changed. But um, so to me, having it fall darkness and I had many veterans who pointed out, my legions would say, yeah. That one can't be there. That's not, I'm like, you're right. Um, but that's how that whole thing started. But nothing drives me more crazy than like when I'm driving through some town like, I don't know. Kandaskag and it's some rural road. Now all of a sudden you hit a bunch of flags in the middle of nowhere and you're like, cuz they have no defined downtown. But so they said, oh, we're gonna put the flags. And then you're like, wow, why are these flags in the middle of the woods for no reason? You know, it's, that does drive me crazy to this day. So I guess, probably shouldn't have got that participated.
Well. I don't know.
But that's how it all started. That's where the flags started arriving in all the small towns, or all the towns is through the Cole Foundation. Which is still lives today. I think we just got a flyer on it this spring, right? Yeah.
And we know what their motivations are, so.
Huh?
We know what their motivations are.
Uh, they have, um, that, their motivation is they have a, a, a museum over there. And the, the Cole family is very famous for um, supporting veterans.
It's, it's, it's a retarded question, but.
I know, but I'm just saying, if you haven't been there, there's a helicopter, a tank, there's all kinds of military equipment inside of the uh. Stuff, so it's to support veterans.
That's a very complicated question these days, and I think a very small group of people shouldn't make that decision.
Yeah.
Um, and, and maybe, maybe of course next year, find out how, how the broader population.
Well, actually, if, when they, when we, when we take this, when we take the flags down, you know, we leave them up for the time being. And then next year's town meeting, we can have a, a, you know, you know, some kind of. Uh, we can narrow down the discussion. Do you want A, B, or C, you know?
I know they have to come down supposedly by November fifteenth, leaving it at that.
So we can, we can cover some engagements, or we could put out a survey and say that.
Yeah.
First, I don't know if it's November fifteenth, some date, remember, C M P requires it.
We were a people stand. Alright, got it. Um, G F C I, I'll mention.
Yeah, well, I haven't, well, I don't know, uh. That Karen says we have money in reserves and other stuff that we can just get these all done now. Rather than nickel and dime them left and right, and then they'll all be there and uh, it will save us some money because they won't. Charge us as much for labor. So it might be a hundred and forty bucks rather a hundred and seventy five for each one or whatever. So then we can get it scheduled. And get it done, cuz otherwise, as these things burn out, it's also gonna be like we have to pull them back in, and it could be months. So we'll have it done for Christmas time when the lights come up and whatever.
Did you have a meeting once?
Uh.
Can we go into our meeting?
I think we have August eleventh, Derek.
Oh, thank you, thanks. He knows this cuz I, so, um. So basically, August eleven, we don't have a meeting yet scheduled. Um, but I would like to because that is when C V and Mahar would like to do a presentation on the PFAS study. And tell you exactly what that would look like, cuz.
That is a work session?
Yeah, well, yeah. Um, it's basically for you to get educated on what that PFAS study would look like. Um, because of course, don't forget, when they start searching in the ground or anything for that. They may be drilling additional monitoring wells, so we need to get permission from Maine Maritime because. Uh, based on uh, the contours and everything, they are convinced that is where that contamination came from. But they'll also have to retest that well first. And it very well could be, okay, retest that monitoring well. And if it comes up negative cuz they self-contaminated it, or some in the mud or whatever they had was. You know, had some, a trickle of PFAS, that could be the thing that set that off. So it would start with that and then marching up. You know, towards uh, behind, what, four o'clock or whatever is when it would end up being.
Be a work session. Or is a regular meeting?
When you say they're convinced that it, for other, they suspect it came from the Maine Maritime Academy. Are you talking about the campus on the other side of the road?
No, they're talking about somewhere behind the president's house in that vicinity. Because when they look at groundwater contours and everything else, that's what they, they think, so. Um, but that's basically what they would do is look up through, but they'd also interview people. There's different things they can do. If there's only so much money for fifteen, you could spend a hundred thousand on this. Or you, you know, so that's why they need to discuss the different options, so.
It's eleven thirty-four. Thank you. Alright, so, um.
Thank you for reminding me, Josh. I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you my schedule more often. You can keep me on track.
On favor closing the work session. Uh, okay. So now I'd like to um, open. The select board meeting at. Four, what, no, my five. And the first thing we have is a general fund agreement. Twenty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. Do I hear a motion? Okay, um, on favor?
Alright.
Alright. Thank you. And then we have a water warrant, the two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. I'll move that now. Second, you on favor? Alright. And now we can approve the July sele- select board minutes. Uh, I'll make a motion that would be those minutes.
Second.
Alright, um, board and community appointments, we have four. First, to the planning board, um. Uh, is Bruce Boskowitz, and I have to accuse myself, so.
I, I knew if we appoint Bruce Boskowitz to the uh, to the planning board.
Second.
On the favor?
Um, and Charles Hodgkins, um, I'll move that we. Uh, appoint Charles Hodgkins as a regular member or an alternate member, who will make it his choice. To replace Bev Bishop, and his term will expire in twenty twenty-six.
Second?
On favor? Okay. Hey, Cemetery Association, um, Kathy Eaton. Uh, is that for a regular member and her term will expire in June of twenty twenty? On favor?
Hi.
And Lucy Eaton, uh, same thing, regular member, her term will expire in June of twenty twenty-eight.
So moved?
Second.
On favor? For start being full. Hold up. Okay, um, community park bid?
Yes, and I am saying, I am, um, totally embarrassed. I leveled up the tables. I did a analysis and then, and I was typing up like this memo and I, and. Thought I'd made a specific, so I redid it and made a different recommendation, and then I realized I was right the first time. So, you know, you know what I gave you? Which.
Can I have one?
Oh, yeah. Which, um, uh, sorry, say, actually reverses recommendation, um, because. Uh, Hardscrabble came in about, uh, three thousand plus, thirty, thirty-five hundred. Um, four hundred of your shoulder hat, um, came over, came in, uh, thirty-five hundred higher than, um. Than Adventure Guards. Um, so Derek, I kind of discussed this on last week. And he felt, well, if it was a difference of like two percent or something like that, you know, not a big deal. But if it's a ten percent difference, maybe that's really too much to, I, I had really actually hoped that. Hardscrabble would win the bid because they were helpful in, with us in developing the proposal. Um, they had, you know, suggested materials and which we should use and looked at this, kind of looked at the site twice. Um, and I, so I feel bad, but, um. I, I know we do a lot of work on it now. I'm sure we would instead of them again. I think, I can share the. I, so Hardscrabble, you know, came in with a standard, uh, you know, short and sweet, concise. They document, um, this little, uh, uh, group wrote this very professional, nice little proposal. And they actually specialize in, um, in trails. They've only been doing it for five years. It's a husband and wife couple. Um, so they're an interesting group. I think they came in a bit cheaper because they're hungry for work. And my, my, to my guess, um, they're doing more of the work themselves. I mean, they have a couple of other, they have a few other people working with them, but. Um, they're, they're gonna use a hand auger instead of kind of equipment to dig them post holes. They're gonna take, uh, they would start earlier, they would take, I think, three plus weeks rather than two. Um, but I think fewer, fewer people. They also, I don't think they've come to see the site, so it may be a little more difficult. Then they realize maybe just, you know, with the slopes or they didn't think it was gonna, you know, the truck, shrub removal wasn't gonna take any. Much time, obviously, but we do want them to do quite a bit by the, um, by the birch trees. So, um.
I mean, if I could just jump in.
Yeah, it was awesome.
My, my, my sister works for the city of Portland, and she's in charge of Parks and Recreation. And she was just telling me about a horror story where they gave a little bit to somebody. And, and, and the person clearly didn't understand the job.
Yeah.
And, and then, you know, it was now, they might have litigation or something because they're not doing it right. So, I mean, of course, we wanted, we wanna give it to them a little bit. I just think, before we, we issue it, they make sure they fully understand. You know, what the project is. I mean, cuz we would wanna have them start and then have it be a problem.
Uh, for sure. Um, so again, that's why, I mean, it's your decision.
I just wanted to speak, I wasn't here today, I'm counting on Hardscrabble, but I will tell you that I've had to do a lot of stone patios. Stone walls, and they are here, they're in our community, and they, they consistently, I think, do very good work. And I agree with Dan, to hire somebody that hasn't even seen the site, although it might be in the short term, a significant cost savings. In the long term, we really want this to look as best it can look. And if, if what Hardscrabble does gets washed out or is damaged, I know Mike Longough to know, he's gonna come back. Because he realizes he's working for the town and he wants to make sure it represents his best work and he gets other jobs in the town.
Yeah, it's, it's not a lot of work in town.
Legally, 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 if we awarded the contract to someone who didn't have the lowest bid, are we, are we?
We have to report that, for example. Derek, you got a, a notice from.
Yeah, yeah, some, yeah, the usual suspects come out to do that.
And then, but, and since it is ten percent more.
Right, so this is a federal one, we wouldn't even have that. I have a lot of times in my personnel policy, it's the most favored nation type of thing. We give like a two or three percent leeway there. Um, if it, so. Because it's a local contractor, but you start getting up above that, then, you know, you're starting to affect the integrity of. Why you put it out to bid in the first place. That's the only problem.
Did, um, did the Adventure Guards, did they give references?
Yes.
And have you, have you talked with any of the people that they've been working for?
So I haven't checked the references. Um, they're, they're typed up, um, and, uh, um, they're typed up.
I would say before we make a decision, we should check the reference.
Yeah, we definitely do that. Alright, do you wanna, um, have a, have a quick look at that stuff?
I mean, this is, I mean.
It makes, it makes sense that you would, before you would award that, you know, confirm their references are positive.
It's a very professional.
It's really nicely put together.
Um, yeah, when the R F P went out, was there opportunity for bidders to come see the site?
Um, I mean, they, the address is there, they're welcome. It was a relatively short, it was about ten, ten days, three weeks. Um, but, um, you know, that's their choice to come see it. It was, they were told, the address was provided.
Yeah, there was, there wasn't a set, you know, sometimes they'll have a, you know, a set day and time where people can come in, you know, take a look at it and. You know, if they have any questions, they get answered.
We, we know if they ever, if they might have driven to town and just took a quick look, cuz they might have done that. You don't know.
I, I would say two things. We checked the references and now we just say that before, before the, the select board would like you to come see the site before they make a decision. Can we do that or?
We can do that. They'll help postpone it for another week, but that's fine. We can do that.
So we can go on August.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure, and, uh. Yeah, sorry.
Can somebody make a motion to table that?
Yeah. Table this, award of the community park bid until August fourth, so that we can check references and.
I second.
Yeah, I'm, um.
On, on favor? Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm done.
Okay, you sure? Okay, um, the sewer department budget is here. So, the utility board met last Thursday. And they, we even are recommending their twenty-six sewer budget. They voted unanimously to recommend budget of five hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Budget is up three point eight percent for twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. The accounts that make up the majority of the increase are electricity and chem. So.
I believe we accept the budget.
Okay, one second. Um, is there other business?
There is a second part for that sewer.
The rates.
What's the other part? Utility board, also, yes, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, the sewer budget. One point five percent increase, is what they're asking for, um.
This is a, an actual recommendation to do a one point five percent sewer rate increase.
Rate increase, yeah, okay, alright. So.
Uh, and I guess of the three, if you remember, in, on the water department, the Public Utilities Commission has set it up so that we can do a one and a half percent increase every year. Without having to do the full rate case. Last year, we did piggyback the sewer and we did the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, you also remember sewer really has, I mean, like almost nothing in surplus. Um, and I think it's important that we do, you know, these little one and a half percent rate increases to kind of keep things moving forward. So that was in the utility board, was on board with this.
So, is there a motion to recommend or to increase the sewer rate by one point five percent?
And move we increase the sewer rate one point five percent.
Alright, I'm sorry, I was on the spot, alright. Now, is there other business?
The executive session.
I just wanna make sure, Derek heard this the other day, at the, at the housing meeting. We were discussing infrastructure and what the availability of infrastructure was to have. Coincidentally, the next day I came to the utility board, cuz I, I'd never been to one. Coincidentally, the next day I came to the utility for a meeting, cause I I'd never been to one, didn't know the answer. And apparently our super plan, all our associates was present, and they said our sewer plan is at fifty percent. So we have a lot of room for extra sewage capacity regenerated on net to the sewer plant. Uh, I asked what our water capacity was and that was a different math. They said that there isn't any water capacity. And that's, that, that was, uh, so, um, in talking to Derek, Derek was gonna go back to all of our associates. And get a more official answer on that, because it didn't seem to match what Derek was thinking, correct?
Yeah, and and she's gonna get back to me on that, cause that's true but not true. It it depends on a few things, like she was saying, it's complicated, cause right now we haven't been in the drought situation. So, and then how much capacity they would be using. The water lines on that, I think, are all gonna come into play for that state, for that statement there. Um, so that's. I'm still waiting for the, you know, to, on that. But basically, it was one of those things where you said, well, it's, it's complicated, you know, that type of thing.
I just wanna make you guys aware of that, because it plays into so much about what we're talking about, that we really do need to know where that answer truly is.
Right, and what it means.
Thank you. Well, then, um, I will make a motion. That we need to enter into executive session, which is going to twelve one in our S H, October third. Section four oh five six eight to discuss.
So I just wanted to ask for a question out of, um, somebody's told me that, uh, first, what were you doing, Sam?
I'm sorry, could you second?
My question was, um, I've heard that Hards Travel is doing library work, is it true?
I don't know if they back on libraries.
I haven't heard that.
I heard that, maybe, maybe somebody was just like, oh, maybe, I don't know.
I don't even know that they're at that thing yet.
Cause the library, who's, I, who's doing the. There are so many else.
The landscaping, so I don't know who it is. It's supposed to be starting eventually.
Yeah, we give somebody else.
Forget who it is. Yeah, I don't remember the name either.
So how much do I have when, when I compare to Hards Travel says, you know, like. Who and how much and, you know, I mean, I can, I say nothing, but.
I mean, they're, but they, I mean, technically, I mean, a lot of times, when they, when people open bids, the amounts are public right away. I mean, because right now, I mean, there is no.
Can, can the vendors amend their original bid?
Well, we, we, we actually, we asked these guys to us to amend their bid because it. It, um.
You made a change of us a plan.
And they didn't know what Hards Travel had bid on or anything. They just made, the only thing they were doing is if you're not doing the plantings, take that out, what would your bid be?
Yeah, I, I was a point of clarification.
But I mean, you can't tell somebody, you know, you can't tell Hards Travel, but.
I checked with Hards Travel and they hadn't, they did not include the plant.
But you can't tell them what the two prices are and then say, do you want to amend your.
I will say this, if Hards Travel doesn't get, they have plenty of work in town. I mean, it's not like, it's not like his business is gonna hurt if he misses one job. Yeah, so.
I just feel bad because he would have been so hopeful, but um.
And it is, I mean, you know, he, he gave, you know, and. That's the other thing, is that his time might be worth for five hundred dollars if there is a difference that, you know, that he gave ahead of time, so.
But we also made it easy for him to give the big day because we made it.
Alright, so thank.
Thank you both.
Thank you.